... led by Reverend Todd Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, thank you for allowing me to be here to pray for you all.
Thank you, Todd.
In God's Word, we know that the believers, God's believing family, seek His face first. And you folks are tasked with the task of seeking the will of the people. But I pray that you seek the will of God first. So in this prayer, let's do that. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do cry out to you. And as believers in you, believers of your Word, we do seek you first. And my prayer is for this group of commissioners and leaders of this great county, that they find the time to seek your face, to seek your will in all the dealings of the business of this county, the government, the runnings. Give them the wisdom they need to make the decisions so this county can flourish in the manner you wish. Help them to balance the will of the people and your will, God. Give them knowledge. We pray all this in your Son's wonderful name. Amen. Amen. Thank you. Takes us to correspondence and organizational business. John?
None at this time.
Takes us to public comment. We do have one person signed up. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Gene?
Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street, Pomona, Kansas. In the paper last Saturday, there was three articles in the paper that I want to make just some comments about. The first one was on, there's two of them on the front page and one inside the second page. But last Wednesday, we had an unfortunate thing happen at West Franklin School District where a bus driver by the name of Gilbert Stone King passed away while he was trying to bring three preschool kids to school. And his younger brother, and that's his only brother left, and he has one other sister. I talked to, he lives in Pomona, and I went and talked to him and he told me what had happened. And so it's a very, very sad situation. But he was bringing them to school. He got in and he parked the van, he parked the van and then he slumped over dead. So I'd like to hope that everyone will say a prayer for his family because he was a great man according to what Richard told me in Pomona. So I wanted to reference that. Thank you. The second item is on the front page. This one here is, first of all, if you read it, it was on the Pomona Community Library, kicked back to the former location. Well, I'm on the Friends of the Library. We ain't had a time to respond to this so-called lies from the mayor of Pomona because they're talking about whatever it is when it's going to come out. And I'm only one member, or it's 15, about 15 of us, that Scranton and Seneca had six library board members said they are left wondering why the Friends of the Pomona Library is not reciprocating the so-called friendship. Well, it's more to it than that. Yeah, we did ask them to be kicked out because of what they've done. And so that will come out. And it will come to a newspaper and to the radio station. Okay? The third thing is county sheriff talk, overages and budget. You know, I know everybody's got a right to say things they want. But I'm referencing to one commissioner in here, Colton Waymire. Okay? Now, the, because I think it needs to be referenced. Colton Waymire, so you're basically saying that there is no use for this process. We should use whatever you need, that it's our job to set the mill levy. That equals whatever you submit. And then, "What I need, yes. I'm not saying whatever I want," Richards replied. "I respect the process. That is why we have the process. And that is why I come here and we have conversations. But in reality, that is what I ask for." To me, what Jeff has went through and all that, and he has to, in the comments he makes further into this article, he needs what he needs, as he says. And I think that's what you should do and do the right thing because I think, because of his quality of man that he is and what he does for this town and this county is excellent. Thank you.
No one else signed up? That takes us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda today that need to consider and approve are the Franklin County Minutes for the April 13, 2016 Commission Meeting and claim vouchers in the amount of $474,646.23 and tax change orders in the amount of a minus $4,284.10. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Takes us to our first item of business. Our first item of business is the approval of the fiscal year 2017 budget and budget narrative for the Kansas Department of Corrections Adult Services in the amount of $446,046.81 and also the approval of the fiscal year 2017 Kansas Department of Corrections Comprehensive Plan for Adult Services. Allison?
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, I am here for the approval for the Fourth District Community Corrections Adult Comprehensive Plan Budget Funding Considerations. In February of this year, Community Corrections received notice that the agency would be receiving $446,046.81 in funds for the adult service program budget. On or before May 2nd, each judicial district is required to submit a comprehensive plan and budget application to the Department of Corrections for the upcoming fiscal year. The plan details our community corrections' current resources, programs, gaps in the service delivery objectives and the ability to meet our evidence-based practices for fiscal year 2017. Community Corrections hopes to further develop what has already been established while at the same time addressing the gaps that we have in our agency. Specifically, the agency seeks to maintain our quality assurance efforts but also developing a behavioral sanction grid and enhancing our cognitive behavioral programming. The plan provides additional details regarding the district's approach on the supervision plan, or on the supervision. Any other, you guys have any questions regarding?
Pretty straightforward, I think, with something we do every year. Any questions for Allison?
All in there if you want to read it.
Okay. Derek informed me that we probably ought to do this on two separate motions. One to approve the budget and the other one for the comprehensive plan. So look for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2017 budget request of $446,046.81.
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second, on favor? Oh, excuse me.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
There we are.
Quick there, wasn't it?
Yeah. I would look for a motion to accept the Comprehensive Plan for the Adult Services for 2017.
Make a motion to approve it?
Have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you. May I approach with the?
I'll just sign it after words bring it to you. It takes us to the second item, which would be consider approval and adoption of agreement with ICMA Retirement Corporation. Kayla?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Kayla.
Morning, Kayla.
If you will recall, it's been some time back, some of you. In 2007, we entered into an agreement with ICMA Retirement Corps in conjunction with a compensation package of the then-county administrator. And since that county administrator's separation, this account has remained inactive. The IRS has a regular six-year review schedule for the 401 types of plans for which we participate in with ICMA. And normally, they do what we call a negative election, which means if you don't come back with the change, then everything just becomes a status quo. However, the IRS has recently changed that regulation and now they're requiring a six-year review and it has to actually be approved, the plan has to be approved by the sponsors of which we're one. So at this time, we have a couple of options, in my opinion. One is, since we're no longer actually using the ICMA RC plan to actually dissolve the plan if we would like to. However, there's a lot of paperwork. Should we, in the future, want to continue or have someone who would like to participate in ICMA's retirement? It would cause a lot of costs, I would say, personnel costs, to go back through all the paperwork and et cetera to go back and activate or initiate a new plan. The second one is just to continue as we have been, not using it. And at some future point in time, if we do have someone who wants to participate, the plan is in place. It's not costing us anything. We don't need to do anything other than continue to review the plan document and make sure that it's up to date with whatever we would like to have. And that would be my recommendation, is that we just maintain it in place. Even though it is in inactive status, there's not a whole lot we really do with it. Anyone have any questions over the plan document or?
That's pretty straightforward also. I have no questions. Does anyone have a question? Boy, have we questions on? I would look for a motion to approve and adopt the agreement with the ICMA Retirement Corporation, leave it in effect at an inactive status.
So move.
Have a motion? Second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Would you like for me to leave this document to be signed in the office or?
I'll just stop by.
Okay, that would be great.
We all need to sign it or just?
It asks for a couple of signatures, so maybe you and the vice chair, if you could do that.
Stop by afterwards.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Item number three, consider authorizing the chairman to execute the contract for the Jackson Road Bridge Replacement Project. Jim?
Good morning. The Board of County Commissioners awarded the bid to Brian Olmeyer at your meeting on April 6th. Brian Olmeyer has returned, executed documents and bonds, and it's now ready for our execution. The request is a motion authorizing the chairman to execute the contract.
Okay, this is one we've talked about numerous times and just each step moving forward with it. So anybody have a question? If not, would look for a motion to authorize the chairman to execute the contract for the Jackson Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Make a motion?
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion in a second?
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Item number four, Jim's going to stay with us. Consider authorizing the chairman to execute the KDOT County Agreement to Treat Noxious Weeds.
KDOT has contracted with Noxious Weed Department for a number of years to spray the state rideaways in Franklin County. They've asked to do it again this year. The request is a motion authorizing the chair to execute the agreement.
This is also something we've done every year since I've been here, at least. Have we adjusted any of the costs?
Nope. They were adjusted significantly last year.
Boyd, went to the wage compensation. I know some of the employees' wages went up. I didn't know if it in turn needed to affect this or not.
This is wages and benefits.
Okay. So we're made whole.
Look for a motion to consider authorizing the chairman to execute the KDOT County Agreement to Treat the Noxious Weeds.
So move.
Have a motion? In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Number five, consider and approve joint Memorial Day ceremony at the Franklin County Memorial on the Courthouse property hosted by Vietnam Veterans of America, Five Star Chapter, in partnership with the Ottawa American Legion War in Black Post 60 and the Ottawa Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 5901. John?
Commissioners, we received this request in the mail and brought it to you for consideration. It's pretty, gives all the highlights and all of the information. And we wanted to go ahead and get this down as quickly as possible. So we went ahead and put it on the agenda just for your consideration.
This event's going to be taking place May 28th, Memorial Day weekend. That's a request. And it's Kathy Lee and Sherry Ryder organizing the event. And they talked to me about it and I said we need to have it on the agenda. So it's a little bit of background too on this. Let's make a motion to approve this request.
Second?
Have a motion in a second?
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Takes to staff reports. John?
Commissioners, a couple of things is that the Community Corrections Director position, we had a finalist and worked to make an offer. But due to some circumstances regarding their personal life, they decided to decline the offer at this time. So we are back to step one and we're starting the application, or excuse me, the announcements, job announcements for that position. Again, so we're moving forward on that. But we've got to start from square one again on that. Second thing is that the Rock Creek Development Master Planning, several of us, Larry, myself, Jim, have been involved with both the city and all of their staff that are involved in that and then also the engineering firm on that. We are getting close to making a final recommendation and that is expected to be ready by the middle of next month. And we're getting a time scheduled for that meeting to present to both the, both commissions, the city commission and the county commissioners, so that you can take a look and have a discussion about what has been had or what has been developed. Also, there will be opportunity shortly after it's been presented to you for the public to see that as well. So. Last thing I would say is that I received an email from Commissioner Harris regarding, since he was unable to attend today, regarding he met with the ECAN Board. They discussed Board Governance Survey and Action that is needed from that. Discussed the summer lunch program for Ottawa and Garnett. They discussed the May as the Community Action Awareness Month and requested proclamations from the city and county as such. So we will be seeing those discussed and set Saturday, September 17th, as a board retreat to discuss strategic planning for ECAN, completed and delivered the Richard Jackson CEO Annual Performance Evaluation. The last thing Commissioner Harris sent and requested is that he respectfully requests that the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners reconsider the time that the commission meetings are held so that not only he but other similarly situated citizens that work during the day are able to attend. Talking with, about that request by Commissioner Harris with the county counselor, we've determined that the best course of action is to put that on as a discussion item, as an agenda item on the next meeting for not only commissioners to weigh in but anybody from within the community that has an opinion or would like their voice heard, that they give, be given the opportunity to address that to the commission.
Will this be on the agenda for a study session or for a regular meeting? For a regular meeting?
Yeah. Is there, there's not a study session this Monday?
No.
Yeah. I think it needs to go on as soon as possible. So it would be my recommendation.
And that's what I was planning on putting it on.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Derek?
Nothing at this time.
Sheriff?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Have a few things. First thing is, I just want to let the commission and the public know, we do get along. During our, sometimes during our processes, we don't always agree. That doesn't mean we're mad at each other, we dislike each other. Those things happen, just through the nature of it. But we do not have a dysfunctional government here. And I just wanted to assure everyone that that's where we're at. Last week was the 911 dispatch appreciation week. And I wanted to thank all the organizations that we dispatched for, for going in and helping celebrate that and taking care of our dispatchers. The administrator came over Friday. We all had had lunch down there together. And it was very, very much appreciated by the entire staff. And we made it through another, this last weekend was a big prom weekend. We had three of them and we didn't have any problems. That came about with that. A lot of that is because the trend has changed to where the schools and the parent programs are actually getting very involved in after-prom programs. The county attorney's office and the sheriff's office both do contribute to those and help out as much as we can at those events. And so those seem to be successful and we were glad that we had another successful year. I get nervous every weekend, ever, since I've held this office on prom weekend because I do not want to get that two or three in the morning phone call where I have to go out and make a notification. So far, we've been pretty, we've been successful on that and hopefully that will continue. We do have a, we did complete our hiring process for a deputy. And our new deputy, it's Nick, and I, the last name is Trent Fellys or, I can't pronounce his last name. Anyway, Nick will be starting on Monday. And he comes from a law enforcement family. He's from the Chicago area. He'll be, and he'll be moving in here real soon. So he will be starting Monday and he's excited and we're all so excited about him, about having him. And then tomorrow at 10:30, we're going to be introducing our newest canine to the public. And also, that purchase of that dog was made by a contribution from a community member who will also be there, that we can publicly say thank you for the contribution of purchasing that dog. And so that'll be down at our office at 10:30 tomorrow if any of you are interested in being there. So other than that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
One of the main complaints you used to hear was they couldn't read the signature on the citation. Now, they'll only be able to pronounce it if they can read it right.
That's why we write the badge number. Thank you.
Thank you. Dustin, anything for your department? Jim?
I talked yesterday to Representative Vance Brothers. He states that at the rate they're accumulating cover material, it's probably going to be first part of August before they could consider doing ours.
Still puts us a couple of months ahead of where we've been in the past. So hopefully that works out. Jim?
I'd just like to thank you guys for all participating in the meeting last week. I thought it went really well. From what I heard from other counties, they were pleased with how it went too. So I'd just like to say thank you to you guys for your support and helping make it successful.
Well, thank you and all the people that worked with you to put it on.
Absolutely.
Lot of work to it. You did a good job. I love you.
It was done very well. And I think that says a lot. When we have something to do like that, we should do it as well as we can. And I thought it was done very well.
Okay, that takes us to commissioner comments and board reports. Boyd?
I want to reiterate what Gene said about Mr. Stone King. It was kind of a shock. I'm sorry that this man lost his life. But he's served his community for many years. Anybody who drives a school bus is really commended by what they do and the safety of the kids that they carry to the schools. This Thursday, tomorrow, there'll be a chamber event, Main Street of Mixer, at Smoke Creations. Going to recognize Tim Van Leeden for being a businessman of the year and the new FCDC Director, James. I forgot, James will be there too. At Smoke Creations, 6:30. I'll be on vacation next couple of weeks. I'll be out of commission for a while. And about three meetings. And Friday, which I won't be attending, is another coffee at Norris Agency. So gentlemen would like to go to that. Appreciate it.
Or you guys can go.
Or anybody else.
I try to go when I can.
Anybody else. Yeah, that's all I have.
Three things. I guess just to echo off the sheriff, you know, well, I guess back up a little bit. Paper does excellent job of, you know, reporting what happens here. But it's never going to be the same as if you were at the meeting. Like Gene pointed out, in Pomona, you know, there's a whole nother side to every story. And it's ironic that in the same breath, he also had such a strong opinion about how the sheriff and I work together because the sheriff and I do get along, as he said. We all get along. But just as, as he says, it's not a dysfunctional government. It's also not a rubber stamp government. We do look critically at the things we do. We don't just continue doing them for the sake of, we've always done them. So that's over with. The doctors grew, okay, went to the hospital meeting. When Matt was here, he talked about the doctors group that works the ER, which are all board certified, amazing group. The, okay, the way billing for insurance works, they, the hospital now bills for the technical portion. The doctors group bills basically for their labor. Previously, the hospital billed for all, but this is their agreement. And as they transitioned over to that, they found that the doctors group for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas, and this is what he talked to you about, not Kansas City, there's lots of different sub-Blue Cross Blue Shields, they're credentially expired in November. And there's been some talk about this and he reassured us. At the time of the meeting, he had just been reassured that they were re-credentialed. Apparently, they're not. But the, any bill you occur during then is placed on hold. Once they get re-credentialed, that'll be submitted and your out-of-pocket will be the same. So I guess he wanted to, that's what they talked about for most of their meeting, or a good deal of the meeting and very important, I guess, that information gets out that, as he put it, all customers will be made whole. So.
Just to echo on that, I did get a phone call last night from the employee that was involved in this and basically told me they just wanted me to know that this hasn't been resolved, that it's still the issue.
And that, Matt kind of went over that, you know, he was wrong. First, he said, yes, I was wrong. I was going off information. I was reassured. He goes, I, you know, I didn't check it, you know. He goes, I, you know, I didn't check it, you know, because he can't, you know, go around and check everything the instant you're told, so, you know, he, he was working off that information, and he, you know, his honor and what he says is very important to him, no doubt, but it's being addressed. There's, it's very important to them, so. And the last thing, wanted to ask where we're at on the, addressing the use of existing systems in the county.
Larry is, spoke with Larry about that, and they are planning on to start bringing that back up, to start discussing it.
Okay, I saw it didn't make tomorrow's agenda, so.
Didn't make tomorrow's agenda, but it will be.
On May's?
Something that they are starting to look at.
So you think it'll be on May's? Okay, all right.
He, I talked to him more about it yesterday. He said that they are going to start taking a look at it, and probably have a little bit of a discussion about it, but not taking any actions, submission discussion about it.
Okay, good.
Yesterday, I attended the CDB monthly meeting. We talked a little bit about making sure we're communicating with the county as far as which groups request money and funds, and get it from both, both entities, and so that we, we know how many dollars they're getting from the guest transient tax. Also, they're working on their bylaws to see what they can do there to make sure they're meeting what they need to be doing. They still have some vacancies on their board they're trying to fulfill and get that done as well. Right now, the, their office person, Susan Raider, is just, seemed like she's doing a great job keeping things going, and they have also split up the, the duties. Chris Campbell is making sure of the financial side of it, and then Juanita Peckham is also taking care of some of the other part of that director's position, so that they can continue to fulfill the agreement that the county has with their board at this time. I think that's all I have.
Are you still working on that RFP then?
Yes, I am, and like, the next few days, with the KDOT, and I'll do more after that.
Okay. Is that it, Ren?
I haven't been to any meetings since our last meeting. Jim, I will be attending the county commissioners and highway officials annual meeting tomorrow morning in Chanute, I guess, so that's all I have. Do we still have the joint county luncheon today? I show a joint city, county, and school board luncheon today. It's still on?
Yep.
Okay.
Should be at the schools, I believe.
Right, that's what this says, anyway. Okay, any other comments or anything? If not, would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Have a motion. Have a second, all in favor?
Aight.
All opposed? We're adjourned.